I think we're ready for the continuation of the public hearing for 102 Ash Street.
For this item coming up, Kim's on standby to bring in with a conference call because she and I met with Sarah Takas this morning on the site so we can go over.
Well, she has something.
Yeah, read into the record for her comments. I read them quickly.
All right, so we've given this about thirty minutes this evening. And I guess this morning you submitted some revised drawings. Okay, so we've really had no chance to review those. We understand that the planner and our landscape consultant has reviewed, has had a chance to at least look at them and made a site visit. And I think the landscape consultant has some comments to make about the landscape plan. But the first thing we should do is take a look at what you submitted. So who's making a...
I did. There are actually three plans. There were the pre-existing plans that you guys asked for last week, which how everything was before we touched anything. That's this first unit. The second unit shows what we did yesterday, which was basically planting the pachysandra. I mean, correction, the vika ivy.
That's planted?
Yes, sir. It's planted right along this berm. Basically knock the crown off the berm, let it down, add some topsoil, and then plant it and clean it up. That's all that was done with that for the board's perspective. And the third plan is what we've done already plus the, shows the two, the four by four posts with, you know, in proximity where they go, and the replacement of the patio that had to be removed during period of conditions.
And there was a light fixture?
Yes, there's a light fixture is on here as well.
Okay. All the light fixtures existing, as far as the proposed one are identified on that plan, small font, so it's identified on the plan.
Yeah, the existing, the existing pre...
Should I...
Are those located?
They are. Every tree that's on the property is located.
Okay, good. All right, and...
So have they seen Kim's comments?
No, they haven't. And that's, that's why I want to, she just emailed back saying that she's available to be brought in over the phone.
Yeah.
Because the discussion could be a little bit, I anticipate it'd be a little bit more free-flowing.
Right.
Figured it'd be easier for her to speak to the comments as the discussion went on rather than just reading through email and to...
Yeah, but it's four existing.
Yeah.
These are all existing?
Correct.
Okay, so these were planted as, as a result of the subdivision and the others were pre-existing.
That's correct.
And they're all still here?
These...
These actually were planted...
These are some of the planted ones as well up front because there was pines and other cedars that are planted in a double row.
White pine always spruce, white pine.
Okay, so I'm just...
I did, we just put, it just, it just got too clustered to put all the full monitors on it. They're all noted in what, in what the abbreviations are.
And you got the information from...
From where? Abbreviations are here and these are just symbols. I got it from, from Rob Kim's original Metro West...
So you worked right off his, off his file?
Exactly, exactly, right off.
Okay. So you maybe should put...
I'm gonna put a note, I was remiss in that.
Yeah. Okay. All right.
This is, this is...
So the only shade, the only difference between this one and this one is that and the light.
Okay.
Okay. Communication on the posts is here.
Yeah.
The posts.
This is one.
Right.
This is the...
This is the...
Yeah.
That's a...
Half on, so half in and half out. This is... Okay, so that's theories. This is theories and that's, and that's clear. Yes, this is a very narrow angle.
This is there.
This is there, right, so that's very...
We've got all the information there. All right, this looks okay. This finally looks like a good baseline. Good, and this is everything you're planning to do?
Yes.
All right, so has everybody, have people had a chance to take a look at these drawings?
I've just seen it now the first time.
For the first time?
Just, yeah, like us.
Okay. I don't, Dave, I don't think there's anything here for you, is there?
No.
No.
So I'm just looking at Kim's thoughts. So at the driveway side of the house, I assume it's Ash Street, 102 Ash, there's a large hemlock which is protected to the left of the drive as you approach the house. Does anybody know which one that is?
Hold on. I have a couple photos.
Okay, a large hemlock protected, should be protected to the left of the drive as you approach it. This is, there's bucklorn and bittersweet.
That's it, this is this one right here. And you're looking at a third, please.
So this is, wow, so that, this is the existing hemlock. That's right, it's right, right there. And that's where you have...
So that's a, that's a key tree.
So that's where, this is what is sort of growing right here, this clump of dead. And then also there's bittersweet that's actually from this growing up there.
Oh, yeah, there is.
So that's, that's...
Yeah, but that'll all just gonna have to be removed.
Exactly.
Okay, but it shows no signs of the woolly adalgia quite yet.
Yeah.
Okay. Second point, there is a small hemlock to the right of the driveway.
Yes.
Okay, to the right of the driveway?
So right, it's right here. So where that location is, is right here.
Okay, to the right of the entry into...
Right. So right in front of this white pine is this little hemlock that's growing underneath it. It's actually sort of growing over existing roots. And that's something that she noticed that there is the woolly adalgia on that.
This does show signs of the woolly adalgia and, in my opinion, should be removed to allow the pine to continue to thrive and to reduce the risk of the adalgia spreading to the great big hemlock though. Okay.
We actually asked if that could be removed because we noticed woolly adalgia.
That's great. Okay, hey, I like that. At the street from the front granite steps to the driveway, okay, at the street from the front granite steps to the driveway, there is significant bittersweet that strangled out all of the saplings. This area in effect should be clear cut and appropriate measures should be taken to eradicate the bittersweet. You've got a lot of invasions everywhere.
So the steps are right off the corner of the picture here. You can just see it along, this is Ash Street. You can just see it along there. This is from behind where you can just see, it is entangled. There's actually a section where it's approaching the wires.
Yeah, it'll take down the wires eventually.
It really is overrun in that corner. And this is sort of looking down at Ash Street through that area. And some of these, what probably were just saplings that have just grown up, actually are like bending and twisting under the weight of the...
So, but if, if this is removed, that means you guys are right on the street.
Not really, because you have these two rows...
Is there enough blockage for you?
You have these two rows of evergreens. And that's what you can sort of see back from here.
Because I don't imagine you want all the traffic.
You have pines and you have some of the spruce that was required as part of the subdivision plan when it was anticipated this house was actually gonna be torn down.
Okay, so that does block their view from us to Ash Street.
So you have existing screening.
It's just...
It's just a little bit in the corner.
Right. No, I'm just thinking, I mean, you might want to look at Ash Street, but...
Yeah, there's a little bit that you can see in that direction.
So, okay, so maybe you're allowed, if you want to, to ask.
So Kim had actually said in the future, if anything was considered in that area, to step it down by use of shrubs, roodendron, mountain laurel, as opposed to just taking some of those trees and just putting them right on the corner.
Right, okay. And her fourth point, to the left of the stairs, there's a very dense planting of arborvitae along the street and a row of spruce behind them. There are various saplings and shrubs also growing beneath these plantings. Nothing is thriving because of the density of this planting. The spruce needs to be limbed up. There are many dead lower branches, kind of useless. Many of the arborvitae should just be removed and the area in general needs to be cleaned up. There's at least one dead spruce with a tag on it. Is this a town tree?
It is.
It is, okay. It should be removed. I would also recommend that the triple more we make will be removed to allow more space for the mature pine to thrive. I would like to see what the applicant has in mind for future plantings here. It might make sense to remove all but one to two of the very nicest spruces and rejuvenate the arborvitae hedge, or remove the arborvitae hedge and rejuvenate the understory beneath the spruce with broadleaf evergreens, broadleaf evergreens and native understory shrubs. Right now, having both the spruce and the arborvitae does not make any sense because one is strangling out the other. However, I do need a plan to react.
So this is...
So you already were aware that...
And I almost said that, almost verbatim.
Yeah, you did.
When we were walking around, so this is, we're on the same page.
So this is the area. These are the existing trees that are right along here. As you come up the slope, these are planted pretty uniformly and it's, it's actually so, with the dead limbs, it's so dense that it really blocks even some of the trees on the other side that were planted as part of the subdivision. But then there's dead wood, there's dead old either hemlock shrubs or something that's on this side slope that after probably being just drowned out from obtaining any sun, they're just really in decline. There are sections of bittersweet that's starting in this area as well, but nowhere near. I mean, it's night and day between either side of the steps, but it still needs to be taken care of.
You still look at the tree in the right of way.
It actually isn't, isn't there because it was right by this, this red oak.
It's not, I don't know why it's tagged, but it is in the right of way.
Yeah, there's like this cedar, there's, there's a bunch here that had metal number tags.
I think they were numbered maybe on Rob Della's plan a long time ago.
Maybe, maybe that's, maybe that's how it was...
So they were just identity, just trees to be numbered?
I think so because there was that ten acre lot that was subdivided and so I think they had it up there.
Some of these, some of these tags are on there, been in there for dozens of years.
That's way back.
They're calloused over.
Okay. Yeah, I don't think anything's in the right of way. So whatever is happening is happening on the site. Okay. All right, so you've, you've had a chance to, to review Kim's comments and you don't have any objections to anything she said?
No, actually, I agree with her 100 percent.
Okay. All right. I know it's short notice, it was short notice for us too. Yep, but for the neighbors, are there any comments that you would like to make? And let me just say that if we move to the, to the decision part of this, because we're gonna be issuing a decision, there's still, there'll be a, a period of time after this session before we review the decision and vote on it. And we won't close the hearing tonight, so if you want to submit comments during that period, I think that would be, that would be appropriate in as much as nobody's have really had a chance to look at this, so...
How long for now, when do you expect that to be?
Well, if we move to go to the, to the vote on the decision, what, what night would that be? The 5th of December or the 4th, 4th of December? So there's a, there's a period. Just wanted to let you know that. Any, but do you have any immediate reactions?
I have a few.
Okay.
The, I've seen them only briefly, so I've only had a look at it really quickly. Regarding the existing conditions plans, the ones that says, say, existing conditions and that's one set that says existing conditions November 19th, 2012, they show posts on there and they don't exist.
No, well, it's, it's a little misleading.
So maybe that should go on the proposed plan, but they don't, they're not there, so they shouldn't be on an existing conditions plan.
The tables are a little misleading.
Yeah, that was a...
You could just put them on proposed, but they don't belong on anything that says existing.
Exactly. Yeah, I mean, I think that, that's one thing that, the notation of the drawings needs to be changed.
Yeah, that's, I gotta make a couple more tweaks on it, so...
Maybe it should be Phase 1 and Phase 2, you know, proposed or something like that.
It's fine to have it say existing conditions, it just shouldn't have posts on it.
No, they're not actually. There are a number of conditions that aren't existing on the existing conditions plan. It's just...
Oh, really? I thought that was the only one.
No, it isn't the only one.
And then the, the, I don't think that the grading is correct on either the existing or the future for the berm. Well, maybe I should ask this. The, there was work done yesterday there and it looks great, like the, they, you know, cleaned up the dirt pile, put on some soil and planted it, so it looks much cleaner and nice now. But I don't think, I think if it's done and not announced to final grade, it doesn't match what existing or future was.
There's, there's only a four foot grade change, four and a half foot block through here, and that's...
I only say that because it was gonna be a thought graded into the, what was the existing slope and it's still a separate bump, which is fine. I mean, just that right now, if you say that's gonna be the final, then you would have to actually put fill in there to fill the hole or you'd have to show it differently on the plan, one or the other.
So just to, I, I think there's, there's also a question as far as what gets viewed on the site and what actually say registers on a survey.
Right.
Because I agree, and I actually had commented to Mr. Sarah Takas after I finished with Kim about this backside. As you can sort of see from the photo, you have the high point of the fill that was deposited and then it actually does go behind it, it does sort of drop down a little bit.
Drops back and then goes back.
Whether it's a foot or not to register on the survey, I mean, who knows? It's not, it's not uniform between like right here and right here. There's the shallow...
Is this not a deal? I just didn't want to be saying, having it so that then someone then goes, puts more dirt in between without...
If I can...
If there's no more earthwork, then it doesn't matter.
No, no, I just, I just wanted to address the reason because I told you guys that I wouldn't bring in more than three yards of load in the green since I toppled it. I could have brought it back up to make it all uniform, I just didn't want to overstep.
All she's saying is the topo isn't an accurate depiction of what's actually...
Well, it is, but it's, there's a, there's a 12 inch variance on, on read lines, so...
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe it should have been a little bit more of a, an indentation at the back of the berm or something like that. I don't know.
I'm only being specific just so that someone later on that says, well, we just brought in more because we were trying to make it look, you know, I just want to make sure that everyone knows that...
Right.
And so that's also on...
And it might just be because you can't depict it on the one...
Can these photographs go on the record?
Yeah.
I mean, there's a photograph of it, you know, so if some, if it looks different, sure.
I have, I have photos from different angles. The other point is that on the back end, it's more pronounced and that this here...
They need to write more pronounced.
This is higher and then it comes down more so that, like Sean, Sean Green said, he could have brought more to gentle this out.
But you didn't want to bring in a lot of dirt.
Exactly. So one option is basically either to indicate the, the grade, just, and I have, I have photos of it, that just show it coming in more or, you know, permitting some fill just to even that out.
Okay.
So to implement that plan, you'd have to bring in a small load, but in order to manage those grades that are on that plan, or you just...
You said you did gnaw down this ground.
I did, I took, I, there's a, there's a crown that I took down about an inch or more. And it was just two, it was just two peaks and, and I did just take, take the top of it off, just, just to sort of mitigate some of the, some of the peak, right.
The whole pile wasn't brought down, there was individual high points from when the soil was deposited, that that's what was brought down.
I mean, I think, I think it would be better to take detailed pictures of the darn thing. And, you know...
Yeah, it's pretty hard to have to, it's not that huge amount to be trying to draw little conceptual circles around it to try to... I have some more comments whenever you...
It would have been better if the contours had been at one foot intervals or two. So that's, that makes it kind of fuzzy, especially at this scale. If I'll what I'm saying. So the photograph, photographs would, would have to do with...
I have more.
Say you have more.
Go ahead.
Yes. I think at the last hearing, we asked or it was agreed upon by the board that the fill wouldn't be on the Batumis pavement going down the driveway, but it is.
Okay.
Maybe a little bit when, when they drove out, squashed down and spilled over, I'm talking about an inch, we'll just sweep it and put it back on the mound.
So maybe, I don't know how you want to confirm it, but there is some fill on the Batumis pavement, so I don't know if you want to go and just check to see wherever the pavement ends.
It'd be easy just to basically take...
It wouldn't be very hard.
A rod and just, and just test along the edge. That would be easy to verify.
Only because there is, it senses a shared driveway and, you know, it's supposed to be a certain width and so...
Okay, that does bring the question, is this stable in, in terms of some big torrental rainstorm, what may happen? Let's just say it.
There's, there's type of fire agent in there, so it, as we're, as we're talking right now, it's setting up.
It is.
Yeah, and it's that and the fact that, I mean, I didn't want to put mulch on it, I didn't like it, I didn't want to start overstepping what you guys said that we could do, so...
So you're just trying to get the plants in before it...
Exactly. I can't put mulch on it, but again, a torrental rainstorm's got a wash mulch as well, so...
I think the plan shows it off the driveway and is correct with right width, I still think the plan...
Is that reflects reality is what you're saying?
Exactly. Yeah, I mean, it would be hard to, an engineer could...
And they just said to put it back up.
An engineer could pay, well, if it shows, if it measured, you could scale it off that it's 13 feet and that that's what's in existence, then it's fine. But someone should go to scale off from the edge of the driveway, the correct width of the driveway and verify that this plan is what...
Is that right, reflected reality?
That's why we make plans.
Okay.
I have one more.
Yeah?
Have we done posts, chains?
No, we haven't talked about that.
We haven't done posts and chains.
Should I talk about it or do you want to address that?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, the question is where the posts and chains are and, and so I assume that you would prefer to hand them...
Well, my question really is about access and safety. And so I guess preliminarily, like if I wanted to put a post and chain across the end of my driveway, you would say no for two reasons. Well, you might say it has to be back because it's a certain look and you want to be back off the street. And the other reason would be because I'd be obstructing traffic if I got in and out of my car to take a post and a chain down off a post. And I think for that same reason, to put a post and a chain across the very edge of the driveway, it blocks access...
Can I make a comment?
To my parents, one second, before, you know, someone has to sit there in the road blocking every time they take a chain up and down when they're driven out. And so if, if the intention is to always, like to not block the, someone has to be sitting right in front of them to be, and like I can't park on Newton Street where I live and take a chain up and down, and so this is a shared driveway, and so you're sitting in front of my parents' access to take a chain up and down. And if someone, for example, comes in, say there's a UPS delivery man for the saratocasus, if they're parked there to walk in to deliver a package, my, my mom pulls him behind, she then has to back out onto Ash Street to allow the UPS man to leave. And you can't back out onto Ash Street. It's a blind curve on one side and a hill on the other, so it seems kind of dangerous.
Okay.
And that if it's their intention to use it to prevent access or to feel safe, which I get it, they, you know, they knew they had a shared driveway and they purchased it, but they don't like it, they don't like my parents using that part or whatever, I get it, but at the same time for them to be blocking my parents going in and out while they take a chain up and down. Now, at the last hear, hearing, someone suggested we maybe pivot it so that they still don't have someone driving all the way in, but then someone could pull straight into that parking space that's up a little bit higher, take down a chain and then drive in the driveway, or a UPS man could drive all the way in, go deliver a package, my parents could still drive down and not have an access. A plow, a snowplow could drive straight in, plow all the way up and then come back and do a turn to the right and a turn to the left. So, but with that post and chains there, perhaps that's not, I don't know, I just, it seems to me like if you're gonna tend to use it to keep someone from that space, that it should possibly be rotated back a little bit so that they're not hindered or punished for having that shared driveway.
So this is the proposed location and so it's what she's talking about, moving this back here? Can I come up?
Sure. Yes, just a sec, I just want to...
So instead of having it here and be 28 feet wide, which is what the post proposed is 28 feet, you could just rotate it a little. Someone can drive straight in, the UPS man stays here, they plow straight in. People visiting my parents don't make a mistake of driving over there and bothering them and it's clear. And then this is sort of like, look, it's clear, we're not trying to obstruct anyone, it's a shared driveway, no one's trying to go there, my parents aren't trying to park over here, they just want to be able to, I don't think they care, but I still think there's someone should be blocking. Plus, the way it's drawn, if you put a chain here, this portion of the driveway that's a curve is also cut off further because it's berm to berm, which makes sense. I mean, I think fire and plow guys would prefer it to be berm to berm and not be sitting out in the middle of the driveway, but the way you, when you connect a chain across that Batumis pavement is also further cut off, making it even narrower.
All right, you wanted to...
We spoke to chief, or the chief of the fire department chief, and he told us that there are absolutely no safety issues here. He said it's wider than 14 feet at the, at the opening, it's actually 21 feet, I'm not sure where she's getting 28 feet.
If you measure on the plan, the 28 feet...
21 feet. No, it's not, 21 feet. And it's very easy to get in. He said there are no safety issues whatsoever with a truck in here, ambulance, absolutely. She's talking about having to, them having to wait for us to unhook a chain, that takes literally three seconds to unhook a chain.
I just don't think that they should block, will they have to have the chain be picked up and down?
I don't see where there's any issue there. Blocking for three seconds? They've, they've been backing up into our driveway for two and a half years.
It's a shared driveway. It's a shared driveway.
It's not a shared driveway.
That's not a shared driveway.
This is the entrance, this is the entrance to our private property, okay? It's not a shared driveway. That's the entrance to our private property.
Can I, can I just point something out on, on there? So the, the shared part is what you're referring to is, is the easement. That's, that's the shared part. The way you're describing it, you're putting it in a context where the shared part is all of, that's kind of what I'm believing from that description. The shared part is this particular part of the easement. So if there's, you know, if the post are put here and here with the chain, there simply doesn't seem to be possible for anyone to be blocked.
Because you're blocking the driveway here while getting around the...
Ma'am, ma'am, we gave, we listened to what you said now, not just...
Talk to us.
So the, the concept that someone would pull up here and block their access, even if that is the case, it's a, it's a minimal blockage and the probability of that occurring seems to be extremely minimal for that ever to occur. The purpose of this, of the post is to prevent, is to prevent folks from pulling into the driveway for safety reasons, for, for grace and also for liability issues. So naturally, the, the purpose of it in terms of the shared portion of it, it's just the easement. That's the part that's shared. They're...
They, they simply want to keep going back into our driveway just to, for whatever reason they want to do that, they can back up just like this. Everyone that has ever seen this, the, the site has, has wondered why they don't just back up into here instead of doing this convoluted backing up into our property.
And they have done it...
We gave, we listened to what you said now.
Talk to us.
So the, the concept that someone would pull up here and block their access, even if that is the case, it's a minimal blockage. And the probability of that occurring seems to be extremely minimal for that ever to occur. The purpose of this, of the post is to prevent, is to prevent folks from pulling into the driveway for safety reasons, for grace, and also for liability issues. So naturally, the, the purpose of it, in terms of the shared portion of it, it's just the easement. That's the part that's shared. They, they simply want to keep going back into our driveway just to, for whatever reason they want to do that, they can back up just like this. Everyone that has ever seen this, the, the site has wondered why they don't just back up into here instead of doing this convoluted backing up into our property.
And they have done it.
They do it continuously.
And left the car there.
Once they parked their car over here and got out.
I had a medical appointment and I could not go to the medical appointment.
They literally parked, their daughter parked the car right over here and locked us completely from getting out. And she's talking about us blocking.
She can say that the easement, they can handle it.
No, this is probably not the place to have, to have this kind of discussion.
I will say that, that there is a memorandum here from John Field, the building inspector, who says, "The fire department has reviewed the proposed location of the bollard and chain arrangement as shown on the plan dated November nineteenth, two thousand and twelve, and found the proposed bollard chain arrangement and location acceptable. Please conclude as a condition of fire department sign off of any bollard installation prior to the issuance of any certificate of completion." That's, that's actually hearsay unfortunately, but because it's not directly from the fire department. But it is, a copy is, is sent to the chief of the fire department. So I, I, you know, I think essentially what you have to say here is that the, the building inspector would have no reason not to be accurate in what he says. So the fire department appears to have signed off on this bollard arrangement, bollard and chain arrangement.
I'm not worried about the fire truck having access. I just think that they shouldn't be inconvenienced every time they want to put a chain up and down. I mean, it's one thing if they intend to only put it down and then leave because they're blocking themselves while they do that, inconveniencing themselves.
I have a security reason.
Then you can try it. Then turn it fifty degrees.
They, they, we have told them repeatedly, there have been police reports, we told them repeatedly not to back up into our property. This, that's the issue. They want to keep backing up into our property. That's why they want it over here.
He ran over and backed behind the car.
No, he didn't. He assaulted him.
He was assaulted.
Hello? Time out.
I have things to say.
Unbelievable.
One of the things is, they do have a right of way, and I can sort of imagine a big UPS truck, and I'm just like drawing a little line here, coming up and block, and being on the right of way. So that, so that is an issue. Because, you know, like maybe you're not there and he has to get out and he has to walk around and it's taking, and let's just say that they have a medical emergency and they need to get out.
They have room to turn within their property.
But they can't get out of someone sitting in the way.
Truck sitting on the driveway.
If there's a fairly sized.
But if it's, if it's sitting where.
But you can't guarantee it's going to be because maybe it could.
He can always unclip it and just drive in.
There's no reason why they have to back up into our personal property.
I totally get that. They won't, they don't need to back up on it? I got it. But they don't need to block access either.
And, and to assault my son.
The horror. Let me just talk again, about once again, is like there is this right of way, and there might be a problem with a large delivery truck coming up, maybe backing it and being on the right of way. I mean, you absolutely have control of.
Your property.
It's your property without the right of way. I, you know, beyond the right of way. But where there is a right of way, there's.
But we're not suggesting putting a chain on the right of way.
No, I understand.
No, but you have to sit in the right of way to get the chain down.
A impediment, a giant truck.
And so what about, what about the three settings it takes for the truck to actually drive?
It's every day. Every day you put the chain up and down. You have to sit there and wait.
The truck is still driving.
There's so many people talking now. And there's so many people talking now. And actually, I think I have the floor. Is that if you have a big panel truck come up and, and here's the chain, and they stop, and they get out of the truck, right? And they're on this part of the right of way because they didn't pull over because they didn't realize that there was a right of way here. And they blocked this upper driveway. And then what happens? Suppose they don't know because there's a no trespassing sign, don't touch this chain. And they walk around and these people meanwhile have dialed nine one one for an emergency.
We're not putting a no trespassing sign.
We're not putting one.
So we can actually, you can say, take the, take this chain down. All delivery trucks, take this chain down.
It's not locked, so it's simply moved in any.
So but why?
You'll be average truck driver, delivered person realize that this is not.
No. They would stop.
We'll get what he's saying there. Saying that.
But why would a truck driver come up and, and that's even the less, that's even less common. But every day.
If there's a sign saying, "All delivery trucks for one oh, one oh two Ash can unhope the chain."
Well, the same function takes place whether you put the chain where you're speaking up or whether, excuse me, or whether you're moving it ninety degrees or.
We're not moving at ninety degrees.
By the same reason.
That's happened and allows it to be safe.
Drive into my property.
I've seen trucks.
Could I finish my sentence, please? It allows you to have that, have that figure delivered truck you're speaking on could pull further into that space. It's there for that sort of purpose and be at least have another car go by it in order.
I've seen countless delivery trucks stopping on that, on that driveway, that common driveway, and deliver parcels to their property.
Why do you care? Somebody drives there. You still know why. You don't care so much.
You don't want to hear my suggestion. Absolutely.
I probably do want to hear your suggestion. What, I mean, here's your.
Release his property from, from annual review. Do you think there's some magic? You're going to wave here and.
We're King Solomon.
And anyone's going to be happy? This isn't going to continue? I'd say.
I think it's, I, I think we have to. I do. I don't think, I agree with you, but on the other hand, I don't think there's any other, I don't think there's any other place to try and mediate. Do you follow what I'm saying?
Are you saying just in court? What are you saying?
Is, is the thought that it's not going to end up there?
It's the next stop.
Yeah, that's the hope.
Absolutely.
You can take us to court.
Well.
We're all trying to avoid that.
It's a short.
We're trying to avoid it too.
So you think if it stays where it is, someone will appeal, and you think if the case is.
Well, we're almost there. We're down to where the damn chain is. You know what I mean? We're almost there. We're, I can see the goal line. It's, it's first and goal.
At least it's most of them.
Well, it's going across here. And the, and the objection, if it goes here, they'll continue to be able to back up into the driveway. Here's what they want to.
Or how about moving it even a little here so that the trucks could just pull to the side and not be, I mean, it's almost like you would have to take the right of way and paint it bright yellow and say, no trucks may.
Well, that's why, honestly, that was one of my thoughts was paint no parking.
The, the right of way, that there's no parking in this area.
It's not that no parking, I mean, how many UPS trucks really come? It's not that. It's more like every day when they leave, they've stopped with the chain up driveway. And every time they're doing that, they're blocking my parents.
And I go to hospitals to go to work, and I leave here, and if the chain is here and this car comes out and stops here while they get out of the car and put the chain back up, I have to wait while they're doing that. And the same way on my return, if I come here, I have to wait while they're, whichever way they're going.
It's not just the waiting. It's like every day on Friday.
It sounds like the hazards of a shared driveway.
I know. Right. So we don't care if they drive onto our driveway a little or whatever.
Okay, L, L is going to speak now.
Here's the way I think it works for them, frankly. And I think that this is why it's important for them to, I think this works so, because I think they, they come in and they pull into the garage like this, or they pull over here. But the way for them to get out is not this.
Right.
They do that.
Absolutely. I don't park in the garage. My mother parks in the garage. I park here and I back up this way and I go that.
All right. So they want to, they want to be able to do that, you know, and, and then do the chain thing and then pull out straight. So if the chain is across here, what this does is it, it puts the barrier exactly the place where they have to.
I can't back up then.
See, that's, I think that's what's, that's, that's where the rub is. And so, and I, and frankly, I can, I can appreciate that, that, that problem. I have a problem with the chain there too, if that was my way to back out of the garage. You follow me? And get lined up to go on the driveway.
I think it works both ways. It works either way.
So they don't want to be convenience, but my parents don't either.
Then they should stop backing up into our property. And we, this has been happening for two and a half years. I've told them about a hundred and fifty times, and they keep on doing it. It's like they're defiant.
Is that true? I feel like I'm in a.
They are defiant.
I mean, is this, is this a regular occurrence and is this valid their point? I'm easement. I have to get, in easement, I have to leave this driveway to enter mine, right? Because of the way it's made. I have to come off, I have to drive on the part of their property. And I have done, I have done that. Well, this is the, this is their property right here, right? No, no, this isn't really where the easement to this property ends before I enter my land. You're saying the easement is, is more than that?
No, 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 it's not.
The easement stops right here.
Easement ends right there.
The date of easement starts there, but the actual easement, by necessity, has gone on for.
Then, then that's, that's a matter, that's a matter of, of a court to decide, not you. It's a matter of.
Per scriptive easement is what you describe, right?
No, I'm not talking per script. I'm talking easement by necessity or implication.
If that's how you feel. We feel that this driveway should be moved where it, where it should be, on the easement, on property.
But there's so many things in town that aren't in their property.
Whoa, 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 okay. I'm beginning to see, I'm beginning to see Dave's point. This is beyond, this dispute is beyond what we can resolve. What we're talking, let's look at the, what the issue, the issue is two posts and a chain. And I've got two neighbors that can't agree on where to put two posts and a chain.
I don't want, I have to get in and out of my driveway.
But look at it from our position. It's, you know, I, we, we have to, there's, there's no Solomon act resolution to this. Somebody's going to be unhappy. If it's here, they're going to be livid. If it's here, you're going to be livid. And there's no other place you can go. So somebody's going to have to be, so the question we have to face now is.
Why do we need to have a chain?
Because you keep going. Last Friday, just last Friday, that's four days ago, they, she backed up into our property in front of, in front of this gentleman.
No, I have not. I have not.
Yes, you did.
No, I have not backed up out of the driveway.
No, he ran over.
Stop talking to each other. Look, you guys.
At least a hundred and fifty times.
You've taken it all in.
You've taken it all in.
You can, you can close the public hearing party and make your decision. I, I mean, if you, if you guys think you're getting, there's some nugget that's going to drop out of the sky and so.
It's not. I'm just hoping one, one side or the other says, okay, we got a little.
No, that, that shifts.
This is not going to happen.
So, you know, I mean, in, in the interest of your sanity, and you got a lot of other stuff doing, everyone said their piece. We're running over the same ground, thank everyone for their comments, and you guys will come up with a decision in a couple of weeks.
And somebody's going to be, somebody's going to be unhappy with our decision. Somebody is going to be unhappy.
Everyone's already unhappy.
It's a pleasant job we do.
But what, what, what if they, wait, wait, there's a conversation here. We'll have to decide. I, I don't know. We'll, we'll have to talk it over. We'll write a decision and, and pick what we think is, you know, recognizing that one way or another, we're going to get, you know, we're going to get slammed, but we'll have to decide where the posts and, posts and chain go.
And I'm asking the last question again. Why do we have posts and chains at all?
Because other, can't, isn't there any way? I'm just, they, they insist that if the chain's not there, you're driving on their driveway. And so it, it seems to me that it's at least a way to keep the, to stop them from accusing you of driving on their driveway.
It's a shared driveway.
But that part is not.
Okay. Well, so if you do decide to put the post there, then I, we request that it be from berm to berm, not sitting out in the middle of pavement somewhere.
Yeah.
Won't be on pavement. It'll be on our property. Well, the pavement's still our property, actually.
You understand.
But in the dirt, it'd be a free floating post in the middle of. I just mean like in the dirt so that if a plow truck has to go plowing through there, it can go straight through.
Well, it will be, it will be at the end of it here, not on their property, but at the end.
Where it's shown on the plan, right?
Yeah.
Where it's shown on the plan.
Yeah, it's shown right there.
So that measures twenty-eight feet across, just so you know.
Whatever it measures is going to be where it's shown on the plan.
Okay.
And the only thing I would say is that one of the comments I thought was, was an interesting one, which is that the way it's, the way the posts are located now sort of cuts off part of the pave, part of the driveway. But if you move that post a little bit.
Then you have to move it on the plan.
Yeah, I know.
It won't, it won't be, it won't be overlapping the pavement. It will not be overlapping.
But so wherever they go in, they will be on plan so someone can verify that they went in the right place?
Yeah.
And I think that members of the board need to come and sit in the driveway and drive in and out and see what it's going to be like to actually be there with the driveway blocked so that you cannot leave.
There was, there was a.
You cannot leave.
Yeah, but you were supposed to have a state to the field. You didn't.
Not you.
No, no, it was your question.
And they ran with it.
I speak only to the board. I speak only to the board. None of this has been done according to the way meetings are. It's always last minute, something changing. Everything about this has been not correct.
I know. It's been, it's been a chore.
And in addition to the fact that when this was first brought.
The fact that we got the plan today.
Or that the land was, the stuff was dumped there from the beginning without a plan, and it was allowed to stay. Or that the boulder was put, allowed to stay, blocking access, changing the way that I've been driving in and out. Again, they can say that, but I have been driving in and out and there's proof for all these years, forty years, backing out and going forward. I too have to use my driveway. And I think that the, that the town cannot limit my access because again, I know by, there is part of the easement that I have by necessity or implication, but I think that's. But again, that's not yours to decide, but it's not yours to take away either. You cannot take it away.
Well, you may be right. I, I mean, it could be that David's exactly right and we'll reach a decision and the, and the person, and the party that feels aggrieved by the decision will have to appeal it.
Right. And we also, I think the Vincent Rougeau, who was at the meeting at the site lock, said at that time, I think that you need to check with town council before you do this. And I think he was talking to you about the, the, have town council look at this.
Yeah, okay. Well, that's a thought, but we probably should do that, actually. That's, that's, that's a good suggestion. Now that we have something we can look at, that, that's a good suggestion. Then we'll.
That should come a long way.
Can you also kind of add a little bit to?
Yes.
So the, the basic concept of a problem, problem on concept of property, that's, that's essentially our point. We're not doing anything to anyone's property other than our own. So the, the idea that we want to prevent somebody from, in our mind, trespassing on our property, on Grace's property, that's essentially what we're trying to prevent. To prevent issues of liability, safety, those are the concepts that we're focused on. So, you know, in terms of the posts and the chain, well, yeah, I mean, it's not ideal for us either. However, this is the best way that we can think of to alleviate our, our so-called problem. So, you know, in terms of your decision and what happened subsequently, you know, I think it's unfortunate we can't come to some mutual agreement.
Any truth?
It just, it seems to mind-bother them, quite frankly. It's, you're in the town of Weston, one of the nicest towns in the country. You can't, people can't come to a conclusion on a pretty basic concept. Bob, you mentioned about being neighborly. Well, we're trying to be neighborly, and it goes both ways. So, you know, maybe between now and the appeal period, you know, come to some conclusion.
We're trying to be neighborly in multiple ways now. Multiple, in the, no, just question.
Yeah. Okay. Well, we'll do our best. Yes.
Just to clarify, appeal, there isn't an appeal period, right? It's just a period in which before the meeting is officially closed.
There's a, this isn't an appeal period. We, we're scheduling, we'll be looking at a draft decision, the draft language of a decision at the meeting that we schedule. And then after that, if a party feels aggrieved, my understanding is the party takes, could take legal action and appeal our decision. I don't know if there's a, a specific period of appeal. I think that's what he's talking about.
Okay.
There may be, there may be a sunset date after which you can't appeal.
Seven years.
Well, you, you mentioned that the folks should have time to review the plans in more detail, which will, for a certain period, I think you said two weeks.
Yeah.
That's what I was referring to. That maybe during that period, we can.
Oh, yeah. But during that period, between now and the time that we have to make the decision, sure, people can talk. People can, you know, maybe there's a resolution. It doesn't look like it tonight, but maybe.
Even this, this kind of behavior affects marketability of their property in ours.
Yeah.
If it's an Irish car, then I could not explain to somebody, well, you can't have access in and out of your driveway.
Our driveway.
Because there's a chain. I mean, you have to wait for the neighbor to get in and out. It's like when you're in college and you have to shuffle the cars around.
This is one of the problems with shared drive points.
We don't mind. We don't mind. We bought it. We knew that.
It was a parent store since nineteen seventy.
Seventy-seven. Seventy-seven.
And that the length of time also I think is important here.
Well, no, I am. Thank you.
But happy Thanksgiving, buddy, for today.
They're not, he said. We have 19 Silver Hill, they want to review the decision and then 83 Conqueror, we've got a little last minute request for all vertices of driveway and landscape.
Is that, is that 83 Conqueror?
Yes.
Why don't we talk to him first and get him out of here? Because I expect he doesn't want to be sitting around for another 30 minutes. Yeah, they're showing one way.
No, nothing changed from the last meeting. So I have copy if you want to take a look back more than that.
I'm trying not to get any worse, just want to make sure I didn't miss something.
Just one last thing.
Yes, dear.
Not that I want to interfere with something, but you can, I think, have me draw up a plan too. You modify plans with your language sometimes, that would not work well here. But if there's a post that needs to move three feet or something like that, we can do that on plan.
Okay.
You know, just so you're not, you know, not, at this point, probably want it like white, not shaded.
No. I just want it gone.
I tried, I tried, I was a kid, I was completely dead serious on.
No, no, I think that would be, actually, I understand what you're saying, but I actually think, I actually think we almost got there. Six inches.
Not so much.
This was like the last scene from Breaker Rant. I mean, he almost got there, then he got shot in the back.
So this is what was approved by, by the board for 83 Conqueror. So you see the driveway coming in, you have these two landscape pots. So what they would like to do.
And that was, let me just refresh my little half-dead brain. This was like to prevent driving back here, is that what we were doing?
No, just broke it up.
Just to break it up. I mean, this is where you have those gorgeous tall pines.
Yeah, these are, this is.
Beautiful landscape back there. Yeah, yeah, okay.
So what they want to do is basically looking at this driveway here, this is just pulling straight in, and then basically it just forces you to backs up and turn here to then go out.
Do it.
Right, so what they did was take the plantings and use the same number, they added a Japanese maple, however, Kim and Herb Review recommend something more substantial. So either some sort of sugar maple or another more substantial tree. We're still ironing that out because Eric had expressed concern, having something substantial, this may not be taken out. It's only about a penny, eleven feet. So put an upper story tree in there, it's not gonna suck. So she had recommended a couple other trees, so I think it's.
Tool tree and cats' arrows.
Right.
We have, we have a tool tree in the property over there that's, you know, pretty fly, so. I mean, if she's opposed to the Japanese maple, I mean, we'll do, we could do just grass, we can do.
No, it'd be nice to have something in there, it would help block any, you've got some fabulous pine.
Just get a peek of it.
Yeah.
I mean, if there's objection to the mangolias, take them home, you're away from it.
Yeah, I'm not really sure why he wants to stick that.
Well, I think, I think she viewed it as some sort of like painter in a tree, that that would be a good location, but I think, yeah, Eric, it would push out the pavement more to then make this a bigger area. So then you have these which basically then sort of still supplement provide that same landscape for reinforcing this area. And then this here, instead it was coming in at the corner, they just shifted over so that they could, ah, comes in as a corner.
So what, so what would happen?
The driveway moves into this area.
Yeah, because, because you put the, right, as you put the oha, it allows this Y here to then come up further here, so you're coming up much further, which then makes this truly a secondary driver, which it should be, it's a barn, it's not, but this, it's this massive Y. And you can see straight in it. Right, yeah, now it's a secondary driveway, again, we can reduce that down, I think we reduced it down to 12 feet. It allows you to plant here and now further screen the barn from Conqueror Grove, whereas right now.
And I would just say, you know, whatever you and Kim agree to for a tree, I mean, they're reasonable under guidance.
And I had explained to Joe as well that, you know, I realized this is a two-way street and on the original plan, there's one catch basin proposed here, which when we had met with the board originally, you had expressed the, talked to Steve Flock, that's his territory. We talked to Steve Flock and he said, what I, basically by adding this amount of asphalt here, it's about 400 to 600 square feet, it's only 15 feet wide. And so rather than doing a single catch basin here, I proposed to come down a little further and do a catch basin, catch basin, and then reach area here instead of one reaching catch basin on the edge. We talked to Steve Flock, he said he was fine with that. He talked to Dave, Bill Row, I talked to Dave, and Dave said he was fine with that. Talked to Schofield Engineering, he said we're crazy to do all that. He said just one catch basin was over-sized and more than enough to take all that plus get in. I said, that's fine, just two catch basins on either side, but each area, catch all the water going down there, it doesn't make such a cap of this.
Okay, but that's not in your plan yet.
It's on Schofield's plan.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, it's on 8. It's all agreed, any, you, you guys have never seen it?
No, no, it's not that, it's just getting it on the record.
All of these things, are they, they're just being moved around? You're not decreasing or getting rid of everything?
The only change, right, that's what I thought. The only change is the Japanese, the additional.
It's the additional.
I mean, and.
Or whatever tree you all.
Right, I mean, firstly, I'd like to add more azaleas than just plant in here, you know. If the board doesn't have an objection to it, I'll add more.
We hardly ever object to more.
So recall.
Yeah, no objection whatsoever.
So, and then the last thing, which I'm still sort of working with Eric on, is there's from the existing house, there was an existing generator that they want to just relocate to this vicinity, but I've asked for information on noise and all that stuff and.
See, what happened was there was an existing generator that we weren't gonna use. Once we started the project, the electrician said, what are you doing with the generator? What are you moving it to? I said, we're not, I'm not gonna use it. And he said, you're crazy. He said, send it down and come and smoke these, move it over. So we did that. They said it's in perfect working condition. So we then, right now, all the utilities come right up to here and we have the transformer there, the gas comes up there, the gas meters that go to the house and the barn, and that's it. So what?
The question is, what is the DVA there?
Right, that I'll have to, we'll have to look find out.
Yeah, to them, remember, they have this big seating area out here, this is their, that's a big private garden.
Probably okay if this was, is less than 40 DVA on this property line, you know, like 35, 30.
I had recommended that he, they're gonna have to fence it and put some sound engineering fencing around.
It's a, yeah, it's a gas firewood. It's how big is it?
It's a natural gas 20 kilowatt.
Okay, well, actually, they.
By, by, above this tall. And I'd offered to, when I talked to Joe, is we can fence around it and we can screen plants around it further than these walls.
The 14, the Highland Meadows has 14 KW, so those are the ones, they kick out 60 DVA at the, at the unit and.
Yeah, 20.
20's gonna be a little louder than that.
They're, they were fairly comparable and I think they were, I think we actually, I think the model we approved was a 4, 20 KW because the sound was the same.
Was it?
That's what, that's what I remember from our proceedings.
I think they were on 14 KWs. Anyway, doesn't matter, whatever it is, it is, they're gonna have, they'll have the decibel levels at different distances, so.
If it is, what was the rating you said you wanted to do?
Well, if, if this is like 30 DVA, you know.
From his property line?
Yeah, and same thing here, that, that's probably, that would probably be okay. I mean, based on what we've, what we've learned.
The ambient noise in this room right now is.
Around 30, 30 to 40.
I mean, my, my, the only point I'd like to make is that it was in the front yard, unscreened, just wide open in the middle.
I know, well.
That's before we grew up and have a lot of generators.
So by moving it a little closer, but fencing it in and screen planting it.
It's probably not a problem.
You know, I don't see him having a problem with it personally, but I certainly am willing to look at the DVA.
So, so, I mean, to clarify, so if it's un, without the fence and all that stuff, if it's, you know, 30 of the property lines, is he on his own for the fence? Do you care, do you not care?
It doesn't matter, the fence, the fence is only there for, to help reduce the sound levels. So if you don't need the fence, you don't need the, you know.
Except when it's ugly too.
You've seen the. I would recommend something along this side anyway, some sort of fence, even if they were, right. Because, I mean, these, these are, are filling in.
Well, if it's, if sound's not a problem, then if visibility is, then screen planting would do it, you know, probably better than fence would. But if you need the fence, then.
I mean, it would make sense to do both so that.
Yeah, if you want to do both.
I mean, you can't get through the fence and the noise, all the noise all along the walk and then with the screen planting around it, it further enhances it.
Yeah, that would be fine.
Yeah, we'd let that. There we go.
Is that enough? Yeah.
So you just get one for your phone?
Exactly, probably gonna get it. So, yeah, okay. What I'm just getting at is, so if it's, ends up being like 45 here, then the fence would probably knock it down to like what they're looking for, but you gotta, it's gotta be built the right way and someone's gotta do like that couch that I don't know how to do. I mean, I have a, I have a basic couch sheet from our sound consultant, but yeah, the important thing is, and we already, we had already discussed this, right down flat to the ground, no gaps. Okay. All right, so we, how do you assess that without installing it first?
Oh, the spec sheet, that you can talk to, talk to the coming, so have the spec sheet to the DVA. Yeah, but there's no test, you just, they'll know exactly what it is.
Okay, thanks. That's it.
You all set here?
We'll follow up tomorrow.
Yeah.
So they ran away.